Couldn't reconvene from executive session from today's session, which was Wednesday, September twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five at eight ten P M. All members of the court did participate in the discussions set forth in the executive session period. And however, we are going to take a couple of items up for review on the items that were discussed in executive session for the purposes of moving forward. Item. Item number forty one. Item number forty one in regards to the purchase of the fitness court as a sole source purchase under the Texas local government code for this particular item. The court this time will go ahead and finalize some items that need to be finalized with legal regarding this matter, and I believe that we'll be bringing this back before the court at the next available court setting. Therefore, no action is required at this time other than the directions that have been given in executive session to legal. For the purposes of item number forty two. In regards to the request for the sheriff's office to execute agreements for county municipal law enforcement agency requests for transfer of D P S equipment. After the discussion with legal in regards to this particular item, there has been a direction on clarity on this item, but I believe that we'll be providing some additional information to our office before we can go ahead and proceed. So there is no action that's required as of this time on this particular request. In regards to item number forty five, in regards to the change of employment of status from non exempt to exempt for Laura Flores from county clerk's office and of Dencia Hernandez from sheriff's department. In regards to this particular item, there will be, of course, a request that we proceed with the process of the status change of non exempt to exempt for Laura Flores. And we will hold off on Ortiz Hernandez until there's clarity that will be given on that particular item for this purpose. In order for us to proceed, is there a motion to proceed with moving forward with that exemption change on Miss Laura Flores in the county clerks? Is there a change, Mrs. Montmartre? Or is it just a clarification that she remains the same?
Yes, she has to remain as non exempt.
Non exempt. So just for clarity, if I can just have a motion just to make sure that it's been clear that there is a non exempt employee in the county clerk's office under Miss Laura Flores. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion? Yes.
So we're gonna hold the.
Miss Ortiz Hernandez will be held off until the next available meeting. For that purpose, I will go ahead and proceed with the next steps on this, so there's no further discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving forward to item number forty nine in regards to the approval of the replat of tracks thirty eight, thirty nine block C F Yamato Valley lands. Commissioner, I believe that you're requesting this item be tabled.
Be tabled.
Very well, is there a motion? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, second by Commissioner Reese, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Items number fifty through fifty four in regards to the invoices that have been listed for one, a discussion of appropriate action to approve invoice for Luna's rental services, invoice number two. Invoice for allegiance fire protection invoice number one five one four. Fifty two Luna's rental services, number five, six, five, seven, eight, nine, one. Stewart title company, number one, three, two, two, seven, five, nine. And Luna's rental services, number one, two, zero, zero, five, five. If there is a motion to table this item to bring this back for review or unless legal has identified the items that have been addressed in the executive session and can we can proceed with a payment prior to. If there's a need, it'll come back to the court. Correct?
Correct.
Very well. Is there a motion to that effect?
So, yes.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Items number fifty six in regards to the action regarding the Maverick County purchasing policy contractors contracts. Commissioner, I believe at this time, the, based on the discussion, is there any action that you require?
Um, we don't need any action.
Very well. In regards to item number fifty seven, appropriate action to assist resident to thirty seven hundred North U S Highway two seventy seven with entrance through property. Is there specific action that you're requesting, Commissioner?
Yes, I'm asking for approval to move forward and assist the resident. It's causing blockage and drainage flooding that could potentially cause flooding issues with the neighbors around and it's become a health issue. It's an elderly couple. The ambulance couldn't reach to her when they needed to, so I'm asking the court for approval to move forward and assist.
Very well.
That's my motion.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number fifty nine in regards to the appropriate action to allow road and bridge department to perform maintenance on Lehman Ranch Road, Chaparral Ranch Road and Maze Road as requested via by E P I S T. Regards to this particular item, Commissioner?
Yes, I'm asking approval to move forward as the Eagle Pass and the County School District reached out to me in reference these roads that they're gonna stop picking up the children. The buses can, don't have access due to the safety concerns of the road. So we're asking approval to move forward and assist in helping out and repairing these roads.
Perfect. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number sixty in regards to discussion and appropriate action regarding property demolition due to demolition due to nuisance and dangerous to public safety at South Elm Creek, Unit Six, Block Four, Lot Ten, Commissioner?
Yes, on this one, Judge, we're gonna. It's just approval to move forward with the abatement order. And authorize the planning department to move forward with this.
Very well. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number sixty four dash one. In regards to the media contracts for the items that have been discussed here specifically, believe that there would be just an authorization to authorize legal and myself, of course, to provide what is the necessary documentation for those contracts to move forward for execution and finalization of any type of negotiation settlement that is also requirement and, of course, for the purposes of fees based on certain of the quotes that have been determined by those particular media contracts. Is there specific additional language that's required on this particular motion?
No, I think we'll, I'll just work for the honors office and get the correct numbers and date and we'll get it sorted out.
Perfect. Uh, motion, is there a motion to that effect?
So.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number.
Judge.
Yes.
I missed item twenty six. Was that part of a? Yes.
Yes, we did. In reference to item number twenty six, my apologies. But we'll take that already out of order. Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that forward.
I would ask that you could take that up during the public hearing. At your budget. To get it addressed at that time too.
For the fee. For fee process servicing? Okay. Do we, after the public hearing, is that what you're requesting?
Public hearing and you could discuss it there and then we can take action after you all dump.
Very well. Moving forward with item number. You have all, all four of those items? Very well. Uh, item number two, real property located on Y Rick Farm Mobile Home Park. Uh, and item, are you asking to take this by consensus, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. For items number two, three, four, and five of the executive session portion, we are looking at items number two, real property located at Y Rick Farm Mobile Home Park. Item number three, Maverick County Water Works Holly Water and Water Rates. Item four, real property contracts for homes located at Radar Base. And item number five, Texas Parks and Wildlife Brand. Commissioner, at your request, what is the request that you're asking at this time?
We're gonna, I've already presented legal with the facts of every single item and we need additional time to review and check the contracts and we're gonna table these for the next meeting.
Fairway.
That's my motion.
Item's been made to table the items as presented by the commissioner, is there a second?
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Reese, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving into order. Commissioners have all been provided with the books, correct? And you've had an opportunity to visit on this issue for the budget, so we'll go ahead and move back into order of the public hearings that have been set for today. Item number nineteen, discussion and public hearing on Maverick County proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six. Commissioners, and of course, in reference to the items that have been discussed, there had been, of course, changes that have been made to the budget in regards to the discussions that we have held, have held before the court as well as with department heads regarding some concerns based on some recent changes that came from state legislation. We obviously had to make additional modifications to this particular budget. But I'd like to just inform, of course, the court of the actions that are coming before this body as we can go ahead and move forward on this issue and just to kind of present to the court for this purpose. Basically, highlights on this particular matter is that what we're looking at is that approximately the budget will run approximately thirty million one hundred and sixty six thousand six hundred and thirty four dollars. Approximately within this, this rate, based on this budget, it does have a proposed tax rate of approximately zero point three seven eight, three, one, three, which is an approximate two cent decrease based upon the values of the property and the increase in property values that have been seen. There will be that consideration of that decrease that will be presented. For this purpose, there has been recent assignments, of course, or considerations of reassignments of the funds that we need to make sure and do specifically on the matters that I'm presenting to the court as the budget officer to review this particular issue and, of course, with the creation, one, based off of the state legislation that just recently was approved and will come into effect approximately ninety days after this legislative session, which this court all approved unanimously for the creation of what was of a new county court at law. In that matter, for this, I, I have had to work closely with the Office of Court Administration and, of course, with the auditor's office to look at the necessary funding and the requests that are coming forth on this. And I'm gonna pretty much just give you some of the highlights that we're seeing within this budget. But more than anything, seeing, of course, the need to look at the importance of how we can continue to improve upon our judicial system as a county. One, the departments that are set here specifically within the budget are the three main courts that are set forth by this county, which have the three sixty fifth, two ninety third, and the county court at law. I'm sorry, the county court as it stands right now. For that purpose, the, I have made cuts pretty much in what are all of the specific budgets or reassignments of what are on these funds to assure what is the process of working a budget that can assess the needs of all of the specific concerns of the judicial system. In this particular matter, I am looking at approximately what will be a new court that is established through legislation that will have, as of this point, and possibly through modifications based upon the timeframe that we're looking at, will have a state supplement of approximately a hundred thousand dollars that is, that will be allocated from the state for this new county court at law, plus the necessary needs to make necessary adjustments based off of the request or the, the process of how the breakdown of cases will be made in the future for this court. This court right now, from what we are looking at, will be a court that should be established within the timeframe that is allocated by January in order to move this forward. These, of course, as, as it is not a fully mandated legislation that came from the state. It is a need that obviously we need to adhere to as this court and, of course, the legal community was very adamant on making sure that we could move forward on providing what is an additional arm of assistance to the court system as it, as it currently stands. I believe that this is a, a great way for us to continue moving in the right direction for where we are at and where we have been. This process ultimately, we are seeing on the basis of where we are looking would leave an equal amount. Budgets, budgets have not been modified or reassigned on the operations portion, but what we are looking on specifically is what is on the aids to other governments portion of the budget. For the two ninety third and for the three sixty fifth, alongside with necessary cuts that were made within my department as the county judge's office to ultimately see what are these particular reassignment of funds. What I can, of course, inform specifically to the court on these issues is that my department in this particular matter has also seen what is the additional reassignments of approximately a hundred and seventy thousand, seventy three dollars that is being reduced specifically from the department that is set for mine based on the concerns, which are three positions that are being pretty much consolidated into the assistance of how we are breaking down the process for O L S operations and for indigent defense where those departments will be receiving or that individual will be one person that will be assigned to handle those particular matters as well as an executive assistant that has been completely removed from the funded level in the department to provide opportunity in other areas of the budget as well as what is a legal assistant that has also been removed specifically from the county judge's line item. Approximately, that's about approximate amount of a hundred and seventy thousand that will be freed up to move over and to allocate for particular issues from the exact amounts that will need to be made of additional modification. The two ninety third, we will be looking at approximately seventy five thousand in, in allocation reassignment of the aids to other governments that would be specific for the purpose of making sure that we can move and reassign these funds alongside with the three sixty fifth that would have approximately two hundred and sixty eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars that would be considered for reassignment on this matter. As a point of reference on the purposes, of course, of these matters for this issue, a lot of this, of course, was taken into effect because we are seeing that in the three sixty fifth judicial district, there are approximately three positions that are currently vacant. Therefore, that resides of approximately a hundred and sixty thousand in funding that is currently not being utilized from the aids to other government line item. In this process, of course, I take it into consideration as the budget, and mind you, when we're looking at reassignment of funds and providing for a fair and equal process, especially for the court system, because this is gonna be one of the very important items to discuss within the budget. I think that it's important that, you know, it's, it's been a very challenging budget, especially with the lack of necessary funding that we need to continue operating. But I do believe that in order for us to continue with the full operations, we cannot continue to expand upon the needs, but in sort, in, in turn, become what is more effective and efficient in the work that we're doing in our respective departments. I do want to reiterate the importance of where we are at. This would leave an aids to other government line item of approximately that is equal to both district courts of four hundred and thirty three thousand, three hundred and sixty eight dollars that would be equal for both court systems in the two, in the two ninety third and three sixty fifth. My, of course, department would be running specifically on those matters that have been assigned based off of the court portion of the edge of the office that ultimately will now only have two people running what is the complete system of the misdemeanor criminal court alongside with probate and guardianships and any other matter that is pertaining to the county court as it stands at this moment. The county court at law, of course, would be a shared jurisdiction amongst the county court itself of where I will continue to serve alongside with whoever is, is duly appointed, elected to the new county court at law position. And therefore, it will have to be a process. Today I had a very lengthy call with the Office of Court Administration to assure what the process will be and how we will proceed from there. And I do wanna just, you know, recognize that this is something that we're gonna have to move quickly on in order to make sure that that is put into place as quickly as possible and efficiently as possible based upon the recommendations of O C A. That is one area that we're gonna, that is very important for the moving forward of this new court system. I believe that it's a, it's a great asset and a great addition to the court system in general. And I can definitely appreciate the action of the commissioners' court for the work that we're doing in order to make sure that we can provide for additional opportunities of justice through the judicial system that's being offered here in Maverick County. In regards to the sheriff's department specifically, we are looking at the opportunity, which would be the promotion of two specific lieutenants to captains. This would leave what is one lieutenant in play with two captains that would be able to provide that option based upon, of course, specific request. This would be a matter that needs to be determined and once upon that is actually determined and evaluated based upon the sheriff and his, his or, his staff as to who those individuals will be. The funding, of course, is identified in order to make sure that those individuals are provided with that promotional funding. The jail division will be also seeing additional promotional funding for a major and captain that we'll be looking at for specific purposes to make sure that that is moving in the right direction. With voter administration, as of course is noted, in particular to this meeting, you all received, of course, the necessary documentation to see that our new election process will be completely revamped in the process of moving what is the new polling book system. That poll book system ultimately will be able to facilitate what are our voters upon them entering the voting site, being able to scan their I D and not go through a paper process of their selection review of where they are listed. It will stop and hold, move what is the lines at our voting centers to encourage what is a faster process and encourage a more higher voter turnout. Aside from those voter books, of course, paper ballots would still be the, the option or the, paper ballots are still the process. The polling books are just simply the process to move that forward. This is also in addition to the new central counting machine that will be replaced within this budget cycle. Thankfully, we have been able to identify what is the necessary funding through the specifics of grant funding and our local matches in order to get this going. This, of course, is identified for that process. The new voter machine will be providing what is a much quicker voter returns for the local officials as well as for the state and federal officials. Maverick County is always one of the last ones, it's always submitting returns for election night and this is gonna be a, a great way for us to continue moving forward in a more approachable and effective way of getting our results earlier for individuals in, in our community. Approximately, we're looking at an additional ten thousand dollars, it's gonna be a set aside for additional E O C operations, as you all are aware. City of Eagle Pass, together with Maverick County, is the are the owners of the E O C building located over off of Foster, Mononado Boulevard. This facility, of course, may need some possible necessities this year that we are looking to make some adjustments for. Therefore, there has been a, a cost allocation there of approximately ten thousand to make some possible issues on that matter. This is an effort, of course, that is done jointly with, with the City of Eagle Pass and we're working, of course, to make sure that all, for all emergency purposes, for the efforts that are ongoing with our emergency systems that are all moving in, in the direction that is necessary to provide that particular return of, of overall notice during a time of emergency. The overall systems are ready and prepared for, for that. That's just an addition to the E O C. The planning department, of course, will be finalizing what is the new animal control facility, something that the commissioners have been actively asking for based upon the concerns that we have been seeing on these particular issues to move forward and to make sure that we're providing areas of adjustments throughout the entire county and throughout the entire distinct processes for this fiscal year that is to be reported. There will, of course, be that facility that will be set aside alongside with upgrades that are being identified within the parks and facilities line item that will be making certain upgrades specifically for those facilities and parks that have been identified within the county through our projects and through the agreements, of course, that have been put in play. Code enforcement will be another issue that we will be seeing specifically on this matter as code enforcement will be receiving what is a new officer to have, or an officer in all four precincts properly assessing what is the code violations and addressing what are the needs to be funded completely with the necessary requirement on that matter. We are looking within this budget, of course, that there would be, there has been a growing need to meet that demand of citizens whom are asking for code upgrades and making sure that people are in compliance. Therefore, there will be, of course, a modification that has been done to incorporate what is a fourth code enforcement officer to the, to the precincts and so that all of them are identified. Within that, there's also been throughout our three thirty nine account equipment purchases that will need to make sure that they are identified for the need to assure that all of those code enforcement officers, which some already have, but the, there will be a need to identify what is funding for equipment to actually assure that that equipment is being identified for the, a vehicle that is needed for that fourth road, um, fourth code enforcement officer. In road and bridge, we are seeing approximately that there is then an identification of approximately a hundred and fifty two thousand, eight hundred and two dollars for equipment purchases after you, of course, over a year that there has been a hold on that fund from the actual auction of funding that has taken place. That particular funding has now been identified and assured that it is ready for the review and, of course, the use and discretion of the commissioners to assure the necessary funding for this particular project that you all have needs. As we've had to go through the three thirty nine requests of purchasing equipment within this, this past fiscal year, this funding will now be identified to make sure that we can identify projects and that the road and bridge department has the equipment necessary to actually get, get out there and do what is necessary for our precincts and, of course, for the residents whom reside throughout the distinct county areas in all four precincts. Each commissioner is being identified here on this particular matter to receive approximately two hundred thousand dollars in road and bridge funding for their projects in their respective precincts. This is gonna be an issue, of course, that I think is very important in order for you all to continue making sure that your projects are accomplished. You all have been working on projects year after year, little by little, to accomplish what is a major goal in your precincts. And I, I thank you all for working with us over these years because I know that it is difficult in budget processes and how we work this particular matter, but the only way that we can accomplish these major projects is if we do a little at a time and start taking this from the necessary steps. Here, in this matter, I think that that's a, a great move, a move forward as that did see a slight fifty thousand increase per precinct for you all to accomplish. a slight uh fifty thousand increase per uh precinct uh for you all to accomplish those projects in your in your departments. Um, in regards to the matters for uh the Justice of the Peace Precinct One and Justice of the Peace Precinct Three Two, uh for nearly three years, they have been requesting what is an additional um part uh full-time part-time twenty hours in one precinct, twenty hours in the others, to assist what is their their departments as they only have one employee in these departments. Uh, right now, this year, we faced a little bit of an issue where one individual in one of those departments went through maternity leave, so we had to go through a very distinctive training process that had uh to assure that operations in in one of those J P offices were not affected or halted based upon no one knowing how to run the actual system. So in this matter, we've been able to identify that now all four J Ps have the necessary staff with, of course, their their roving employee, as we call it, uh in their respective uh area. Uh, in regards to the projects, of course, that are set forth for um the uh overall airport, uh we are, we have set aside what are the necessary six hundred and forty-five thousand, which was for the sale of the property that was done um to the federal government when they purchased that property. Uh, that that identified funding uh has been able to provide uh what is a much necessary match uh for the nearly six point four million dollar grant that Commissioner Ramos uh has been working on specifically for uh the airport and that will definitely assist with the upgrades that are necessary to move the airport in the direction that is uh absolutely needed. These projects, of course, um are just some of what is coming, uh whether it's on projects of the law library that's also in 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 the works uh or projects that are ongoing for the um park system uh or even for the the judicial system that's ongoing with their particular um upgrades and requests that are coming forth. I think that right now the county is has had to make, of course, what sometimes are what I consider as a budget officer difficult um decisions, but also looking at what is gonna be in the best interest of the entire county as a whole. That is my goal as the budget officer to present to you all the responsibility that I have to make sure that every department, of course, uh is is running with um what is considered to be a necessary amount. Uh, based on these particular amounts that I have set forth to you all in the budget and from what we are seeing here specifically, um with necessary reassignment of certain funding, with the necessary moving forward of what is the uh the 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 budget itself, I think that right now we are definitely on the in the route to making sure that we can provide what is uh a good return to the citizens of Maverick County with the budget that's being presented as it is. This budget was very difficult. Uh, I'll let you know that within our fund balance, our fund um deficit fund, um which has taken us to what is a very minimal amount based upon what are pending reimbursements from a lot of the the grants that have been coming in. Uh, I have to commend, of course, our grants department because there is so many uh grants that we are getting in these departments that the matching that we're having to see in these departments is something that obviously is is what is causing us um to assure what is the first portion of paying out for the actual grant, but then having to wait for the reimbursement and that turnaround of 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 money to get these actual uh departments um fully um moving with grant funding. So I I do have to commend that, but I also want to, you know, take some time just to to say that this has been uh of the the three budgets that I have worked with. It has been the most challenging with the departments that that we're looking at, the add the addition that has been made by state legislation. And of course, um, the requests, of course, that have come in. My my concern here, of course, also lies is that for our employees, we continue to move forward right now basing ourselves off of a a very uh healthy longevity plan uh and a longevity payment that employees, of course, would be receiving. With this longevity plan, we would be looking at approximately uh for air- for an employee who has served more than three years uh with the county, three years or more, will be receiving approximately uh fifteen uh dollars per month per the payment of the of the employee on that on that pay run. Any employee under what is the three months will be receiving what is the eight dollars or less. That was the numbers that were discussed on the on the longevity plan from what we were seeing on there specifically. So I think that those are gonna be uh a plan that's gonna be presented to the court. I further believe that based on this issue and as we wanted to work to try to bring in a possible three percent across the board for our employees. Unfortunately, at this particular time, there wasn't sufficient funding to cover that. That was approximately about three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars that we were gonna be looking at. Um, however, for that purpose, um, the across-the-board review is gonna be something that we are going to be obviously studying to get there. Um, for the purposes of all of this, I think that it's important that the court understands that the only way that we can continue to grow and to wanna bring in um more um departments, more staff, more, and it's it's required because we need it. But sometimes we have to buckle down and assure that actual the 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 necessities of what we have are what is what is going to actually only be um at a rate that we can afford. And that has to be said. It's what we can afford. And uh while it's hard for me, you know, to do this as a within a within the budget, within to make sure that everything is balanced and that I can present to you all something that is comfortable. Within this, we are also adding in additional payments of approximately an additional one hundred and fifty thousand that is going in to the insurance plan for our employees to make sure that that insurance turnaround is not gonna go and have a concern with that. That was approximately thirty-two fifty, I think, uh per employee. Thirty thirty-four fifty, more or less. That was gonna come specifically additionally for these employees in order to make sure that benefits were moving quickly uh and that reimbursements were running through. As you all know, we have a self-funded insurance. That's the insurance that is in play. We receive reimbursements of these insurances, and that's how we ultimately are able to stay um working and operating on these matters. So for me, I think that it is an 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 issue that is important just to to reiterate to you all, uh to the court and to, of course, to the citizens of this community is that based on the budget, of course, that I'm presenting, based on on the uh ingress egress and, of course, of 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 revenues, uh the out uh going of revenues, we are obviously um providing what is a a balanced budget uh that will definitely assure what is the maintenance and operation of the the county, uh assuring that we are, of course, calling on on each other to make sure that we can that we can provide what is um a sense of um departments that are working cohesively to understand the end objective of the county. Um, so for that purpose, um, I'll go ahead and is there specific questions from the court on this matter? I will uh open, of course, this public hearing at eight forty-seven P M on Wednesday, uh September twenty-fourth, uh two thousand twenty-five for the purposes of uh the discussion on this matter and to uh move forward on that end. Um, from the court, uh are there any specific questions or would you like to take public comment at this time? Public comment? Very well. Uh, at this time, if any member of the of the public, officials, uh department heads that are present uh who wish to address the court on these particular matters, uh so that they have been defined and explained to to you based on this budget that we have seen, uh is there uh anyone who wishes to address the court at this time? Judge?
Good evening, Judge and Commissioners. Thank for this opportunity to address you. I'm very concerned about the proposed budget with respect to the recent situation this this report. I didn't find out about this uh drastic proposed cut in in my H the other government funding, which is, of course, is a salary funding from my office until late this afternoon while I was holding court in Zavala County. Shortly before the meeting, I spoke with uh State Representative Eddie Morales about the the creation of the Maverick County uh Court at Law. He was kinda surprised that this was being acted on today because it was his understanding that um first of all, he told me the law hasn't even taken effect yet. But secondly, he said that he his understanding was the legislature contemplated that this wasn't gonna start taking effect until twenty twenty-eight or twenty thirty. Um, so again, I'm not sh- I'm not even sure that this is really gonna get off the ground this this uh this current fiscal year. Nonetheless, even if it does get off the ground, we need to look at the impact that it's going to have on the district courts. And I can suggest to you that it's gonna be very minimal. The um the Anubis Bill, which was the the bill that the creation of this uh county court law was attached to, um basically created the Maverick County Court at Law. It did not confer any specific jurisdiction on the county court at law. Therefore, it defaults the general statute concurring jurisdiction to statutory county courts, which is the county court at law. Primarily, the statutory county court, county court at law, will have jurisdiction over cases that are within the jurisdiction of the county court. The only impact it's going to have on the district courts, however, is in lawsuits in which the amount of controversy is an amount between five hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Any lawsuits in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in an amount of controversy will not uh fall within the jurisdiction of the uh of the county uh county court at law, even though it would only be concurrent jurisdiction. In other words, the district courts will still have jurisdiction of those lawsuits, but the county court law maybe assigns some of those those cases. But that's only lawsuits involving those amounts in controversy. There's still other lawsuits, civil lawsuits that are strictly within the jurisdiction of the district courts. And for example, suits involving um disputes over over uh the title of the land. Um, so that's the only impact that that is going to ameliorate for the district courts, those very few lawsuits in which the amount of controversy um will not exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not gonna impact the district courts. It's not gonna take away any of our felony jurisdiction cases. So all our criminal court cases are still going to to st- stay within the district courts. All the O L S felony cases are gonna stay within the district courts. All of the family law cases are gonna stay within the district courts. So this impact is gonna have a very slight effect on the reduction of the caseload on the district courts. Nonetheless, what is being proposed uh in this budget is that my funding in H the government, which is my salaries, be cut by over thirty-eight percent. That would cost me at least four employees in my office, even though the benefit to the court is gonna be minimal because I'm still gonna be doing just about the same number of cases that I would I would be handling even with the establishment of the county court at law. The reason that is significant is because no matter how many cases the the county court at law may assist with the district court, but it still is not going to reduce the the necessity for me to maintain the current staff that I had. I'm still gonna have to require the same uh the coordinators because I'm still gonna have jurisdiction over um civil cases, criminal cases, O L S cases, and um family law cases. So I still need all that personnel. I still need my office manager. I still need all the 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 personnel that I have in my office that that runs my day-to-day operation. And keep in mind that this is not just for Ma- uh Maverick County. It's a tri-county district. Um, and so the the aspect that that we have a cut um in in personnel at at this time of day is is just un- unreasonable. Um, our our workload has increased dramatically over the last few years. Uh, if anything, we need more employees. I I don't even have a civil coordinator right now. Just gonna do is partially correct. Yes, I I do have a vacancy and that's the civil coordinator. And that's because my funding was slashed a couple of years ago in Dimon County, and I haven't been able to fill that position. But you will recall that I've been here before you, just in the last few weeks, filling a couple of positions already. Actually, three. One of them was an O L S position, so it doesn't affect this budget. But two other positions, which was um um an assistance uh civil coordinator, and I think Commissioner Ramos, remember that's where Glazza
Yes.
Alles was hired, as well as Lorena. Um, La Fuente, the the Fuente was uh was was hired, so I I only have one position vacant, and that's because I don't have funding for that position because it my funding has been has been cut. Uh, so to to expect a thirty-eight percent cut in my salary would require me to let go of at least four employees. Uh, and 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 as I said, under the circumstances, um, the weight workload that we have, that that would be a significant impact on the judicial system to the negative. Um, the argument is that the the creating this county court at law is gonna make things better. It may for for the county court system, but it's certainly gonna have a very dramatic negative impact on the on the district court. We would not be able to do our function. Um, there's no way that I could I could uh keep up with my caseload and and move the docket. I will also add that the this past legislature passed uh Senate Bill two ninety-three, which now mandates, and I think Judge Royce can confirm this, Mr. Vienna can confirm this, that we have a ninety percent disposition rate. We are required to dispose of ninety percent of the cases that come into our court system every year. That is, that that is a very big burden. And the only way that the district judges can do this is that we are given the adequate personnel and not expect to 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 have a reduction in personnel. Uh, thi- this would this would be just a a terrible situation uh for both district courts if if uh these proposed cuts uh were to take place. But in my in my case, as I said, and I'll let uh let Judge Lotus address the court if she wishes to. With her with respect to her court is that it in my case, it's it's two hundred, nearly two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars of my salary fund. I mean, that's I I don't know how how I could be expected to to run uh my 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 court in an efficient manner when when I'm gonna be faced with that type of cut. And and I only became aware of this this afternoon. I wish I could have had time and had some heads up so I could give you some analysis as as to how how many cases we could really realistically expect maybe uh removed from my court uh by the county court law, but I just didn't have the opportunity since I I wasn't given that opportunity. But as I said, every personnel that I have in my office is still needed, even though there may be a reduction because it's not gonna reduce my family court doc- dock is not gonna reduce my my criminal court docket. And what no- what few numbers of cases it may take away from my civil docket is a drop in the bucket when you have thousands of civil cases pending in the court. So again, I I could, I'm 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 just here to respect the request that you all do the right thing and and not uh not not allow this uh to to be what you're going to approve but to to restore at the very minimum the funding that we had uh this 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 current fiscal year uh with respect to H the other government. Um, and I I understand that there may not be funding for for increases, but we're not, I'm not even here to ask for that at this point, but but certainly, don't don't make miss make this job impossible by by such a drastic cut. A- any any amount of cut right now would would cost me a position. And uh because I'm I'm at the the maximum uh point um to to just be able to keep the employees that I have right now. Um, like I said, we've been, I've been working in deficit of for for about three, almost three years now uh with the cuts that that I've been facing in in my department, and I just need to be able to at least keep keep the personnel that I have now because I would not be able to to conduct my business. I'm in court almost every day, and I need my support staff to help my operation moving. When we're in court, my coordinators come with me. So I need to have people in the office that continue running the the affairs of the office. The the worry about their cases and documentations get uh documents get filed every single day that need to be processed, and and I need to have the personnel there. So if you want an efficient court system, then I would ask you to please um amend this proposed budget to to at least restore the funding that 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 you very um fairly provided to us in in the past, and I'm 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 sorry, uh, welcome to answer any questions that that you you may have.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Judge, yes, yes.
Judge, Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for also allowing me to speak. I do concur with Judge Vascalin. I I will say, Judge uh Cantu, that, yes, the attorneys in town and our legal community were in are in agreement to have a county court at law, but I believe that they thought that position that I myself have taken and the rest of the legal community is based on the county court at law, being able to hear not just general jurisdiction, the way it's written right now, that you will not hear family law cases. It will not hear family. It will not hear felony cases nor any civil case lawsuits that are under, that are, that, no, I'm sorry, that are over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I guarantee you that the attorneys today, the legal community, if they were to know and now understand how it's written and how it's a general statutory court, they would not be in agreement. Because like Judge Vascal said, there's hardly any civil matters where attorneys, I I challenge any attorney that has a civil there's hardly any civil matters where attorneys, I I challenge any attorney that has a civil matter that wants to plead under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for their case. And so, like I said, the attorneys, the legal community would be in agreement with establishing this county court at law if it heard family law cases, if it heard civil cases over two hundred and fifty thousand, and if it heard any other felony cases. What I I also reached out to State Representative Morales, and he indicated that him and the chairman were thinking that this was a project for twenty-eight and for thirty. And I understand the need for help. I will tell you, I will give you some sta- statistics that I was able to pull up. I have about seven hundred and ninety-three cases open at this time in my court. I have cleared nine hundred and eighty-nine thus far this year. For twenty twenty-four, we cleared over twelve hundred cases. That's, and so I I don't think there would be anybody in the legal community that would say that our court is not effective or efficient. And this type of cut would make our office ineffective and and inefficient. As you know, I do rely on personnel, my coordinators, I do rely a lot on technology, and I'm all for making those hard decisions, but making those informed decisions, making informed decisions of those hard decisions. And that's the information that you have, that this county court at law at this time at least will not help the burden, will not satisfy the needs or meet the needs of our constituents or the legal community to have those cases heard even on a faster, on a faster, by a faster way. The other issue that I spoke to U S Representative Morales is that those a hundred thousand dollars that the state would give to the county, those do not take effect until September of next year. So if we were to establish the court even in January at the earliest, we will not have that funding. So I would respectfully request at this time that we do not rush into something. If we do want to form a county court at law, that we take our time to work with our state representative, to work with the chairman, to find language to, if we really need that solution, that we make a solution that works for everybody, that is effective and efficient, and not something that's taking away from our court, three sixty-fifth or the two ninety-third, to process and hear cases, because that's what would happen. That is my concern. And Judge, um I think that we all agree that um as far as financial, being financially responsible, I think that that's the best course of action at this time. As you know, I'm all for it. We applied the two ninety-third, started a grant. I thought what I had, it, when I first heard of the cut earlier earlier later this afternoon, I was under the impression that it was to fund that the monies were being taken from the monies that are allotted to us to pay for the uh attorneys that represent indigent indigent defenses. And so, as y'all know, the, I don't know who is aware of it or not, but the two ninety-third initiated the grant to establish the public defender's office. It was ultimately awarded to the county of Maverick, but it was our office that initiated that. And so when I met with Judge Cantu, I indicated to Judge Cantu, I won't need all this money that's in my budget to pay for attorneys to represent indigent defendants. My, I, because I will tell you, I have about eight murder cases at this time, and those are very expensive. We have to pay for the attorneys, for experts that don't qualify because they're indigent. They're for mental health evaluations, for appeals, and that's very costly. So I was excited about the public defender's office to ease in the burden on the county in the long run. And also, as you know, we don't have enough attorneys that take these criminal appointments, because we, Maverick County does pay less than the real pays for misdemeanors on felony. So just so y'all get an idea. That was the purpose of establishing this public defender's office and getting funding for it. So I know that in my budget, I probably am at about seventy thousand dollars that I've expended for paying those professional services for indigent defense. I said, take that money away from that area to fund this public defender's office. I won't need it anymore. So we can find where right now, honestly, Maverick County really needs it. I know we've all heard in the news about people sitting in jail, not having attorneys. There was a big old article about it, and I think that financially respond, financial responsibility and requires us to allocate those monies where we can actually, where it doesn't affect the court system, one, and doesn't affect the, I'll speak for the two ninety-third. Uh although I do concur with Judge Vascal, that affect our efficiency and effectiveness in processing these cases and put them to where the community really needs it, which is in indigent defense at this time. And then take our time to come back and establish a statutory county court at law that the constituents can really take advantage of and our legal community to process cases that can maybe hear family, that can hear maybe CPS cases, because that's a juvenile matters, because we hear all of those matters. So any questions at this time? I won't continue to ramble.
Never ramble, Judge. Appreciate it.
We're not for rambling. Thank you. Any no questions?
I might have a question, Judge, in with all due respect, I want to know, how many employees do you have?
I have a administrator. I have a receptionist that takes all our phone calls. I believe we we process about three hundred calls a day. We have our civil court coordinator, our criminal court coordinator, family law, who handles family CPS and juveniles. And then we have um two more assistants that do all the the paperwork while I'm able to get you these numbers, work with Mr. Vialma closely to make sure that cases are not slipping through the cracks. And I have somebody else that helps with our dimidensolas. You know, we're tri-county. So I I didn't keep the count, but I named them all. I think it's seven or eight, plus a court reporter, of course, and bailiff, but that doesn't come out of our budget. I will say that um I also then inherited the O L S misdemeanor cases, there's no, and no additional cost to the to Maverick County. I do use my bailiff, because I don't know, I have a bailiff anymore or not, but I did that. Of course, with uh I ran in by Judge Cantu, making sure that he was okay with it. And um and I took on the O C A matters at after the O C A and the uh public, the criminal defense, indigent criminal defense.
T D I C.
Thank you. T D I C, our request that I do so. So so I operate those cases the number that I just gave you with that amount of staff.
Is the size of both of these jurisdictions about the same?
Jurisdiction has two.
The two ninety-third and the three sixty-fifth, is it about the same?
Number of cases that we manage? I would say so, yes, because the way it works is litigants come and they file, and it's one to the two, the three sixty-fifth, one to the two ninety-third. We alternate, and nobody gets to choose how that goes. So yes, I would say so. And I will say that we ran, we're running numbers, and Judge Vascal disposes of about just about as many cases per year, based on the numbers that we got from from the software. Thank you. Any questions?
The only, the only comment, of course, and I'll add to that, Judge, and I appreciate the work, of course, that both of y'all do as district judges. I know that it's a lot to take on uh from the from the point of the the work system, the workload that comes in with this. Your office has always been amenable, as well as um the three sixty-fifth uh on these matters and working forward and moving towards solutions and issues whenever they've been brought forth. Um and I know that we've had some healthy dialogue on the um concerns to move, you know, the changes. I don't think that the court system in this county has seen as the proactive and pro- progressive approaches that we've taken as we have in these last three years. Um and that it's ultimately a a testament to obviously the commitment that this court has to assure that we're moving in that right direction. So with that, you know, Judge, I can I can appreciate, of course, your comments. I can appreciate the comments that are coming from Judge Avastan. And um we'll go ahead and and take those into uh consideration for the process as we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Judge. Is there any other official that wishes to address any items regarding, of course, the the budgets that have been submitted? Yes.
Just very quickly, Judge, and thank you very much for the opportunity to address yourself and the commissioners. First, thank you for listening to me when I gave out some brief information uh in the previous public hearing. And I want to thank Judge for being able to give me an audience in his office in reference to our budget there in our our district clerk's office. But it it just echoes what we had a conversation, that the district courts are constantly and increasing those caseloads, which does put a pressure on my office. Uh I don't want to cry about it. I want to let you know that I do have excellent staff, and I want to continue educating them. We work in collaboration with technical issues on particular caseloads, and and by working together, we're moving these these things forwards. And both judges are correct. We do have a performance and measures that the new legislative legislation uh uh put upon us. And and it's up to our office to make sure that those numbers continue. So there's constant communications between our office and both district uh district judicial courts. So um again, Judge, thank you for for what you've done for us, and we continue to try to support um any decisions that that this court deems necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Vialma.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public in regards to this item? All right. If there is no further comments uh from the public on this particular item for this public hearing, we'll then close this public hearing at nine oh nine P M uh on September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Action now needs to go to the actual approval of such.
You have to take a record vote.
Okay, on the actual budget. Okay. All right. So now what we'll do is, uh being that there has been uh some presentation on this particular matter uh for this um review, and of course, some of the questions that are ongoing for uh the actual budget itself. Um as you all, of course, are aware, we have to approve the budget before we can approve a tax rate uh in moving forward. So I'll call for item number twenty-two. Item number twenty-one has already been taken up for consideration. Item number twenty-two uh will be discussion and appropriate action to approve Maverick County budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. And in regards to all of this, commissioners, I think what um is important for us to know, based on the discussions, of course, that I've had with the Office of Court Administration, the governor of Texas has signed off on this bill today. Therefore, that takes effect ninety days from today. Uh the signing of this bill has been approved. Uh the Office of Court Administration has received uh the notice uh from this uh from the governor's office. Um this is why it was a very, I wasn't expecting it. I thought this was going to be an issue that was going to be brought forth, because the intention within our resolutions that we had were to approve this until twenty twenty the next judge's election, because all of the judges run together. So that was something that we stressed upon as a court. Now, for the purposes of how we are moving forward on this particular issue, you know, I want to reiterate on the importance of where it is that we are going to move.
Sorry, Director, but I think we need to open.
We need to open that. Very, thank you for catching that, Commissioner. Is there a motion to open? Motion has been made by Commissioner Morales, second, by Commissioner uh Rio's discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You know, thank you for catching that, Commissioner. I appreciate it. So with that, I think based on the discussion, of course, and the conversations that we were we're having here as a court, um I feel that, you know, it's important to to take that note and to and to make reference to what O C A, of course, has informed me uh this this afternoon, uh in a very lengthy call, of course, Legal was also present uh for this conversation, because I also too wanted to make sure that we were doing what was the correct uh matter on moving this forward. Upon the si- the signature of the governor being placed, of course, on the omnibus bill and moving forward with everything that's going on, this statutory court, of course, that is being um set forth by uh for this county court at law will, of course, be eligible to um review what are cases um that will reach up to uh three hundred and twenty-five thousand in uh reviews for um their uh process of of dispute. Uh matters that are coming forth uh for issues that were, and this is, of course, it was an issue that was brought forth in regards to family law uh on these matters, for that particular matter, for the discussions that were provided to me by Mr. Thomasetti on these issues with the Office of Court Administration. And um assuring that this was going to be a matter, that anything with this, with it was civil, uh any type of family law matter that we were going to be looking at, any type of issue with possible um shared jurisdiction on criminal misdemeanors that would be coming from the county court system as well, hence why I too have made cuts in my budget to make these modifications in the areas of where we were looking at. Uh this is why I kind of bring this kind of to the to the process of the of the court for the consideration to see where we are at and what it is that we are we are doing. Yes, it obviously is a structure that we have to begin process and working uh quickly to move forward on how we are going to actually structure the the um finances on this matter. Uh the court was uh was advised, or I was advised on this matter, uh that that the supplements that are set forth on these uh requests are supplements, of course, that will be coming in the amount of only a hundred thousand. Hence why when we had the discussions uh in executive session, uh you know, it's it's not a matter. My issue here was basically saying we should have created another district court in Maverick County. Uh because it would have been state funded to a higher level for that purpose. And that's where my my wish would have wanted it to have gone based on these matters. However, the court, based upon the request and on the concerns to assist in in other areas, obviously decided that we would take an action and that we would provide, we would go forth in the matter of the county court at law. On these issues, you know, I just look at this from the the point of view of where we are at and what we need to do to to structure this properly, um and to make sure that, you know, we are adhering to this, the state law or state legislation that is making sure that we can get this accomplished. Um and that's where, um and and you know, I had hesitation. I I think that if anybody pushed back on this matter, it definitely was was me, because I had concerns, but in the discussions that I had with O C A, the discussions that went forth with um the specifics office that were moving forward. This is what it is. This is what we need to move forward with. Um and this is what I presented to the court in this matter for us to do that. I believe that there is, there is an, the the court is equitable, uh or the the court systems in the county from my court to the two courts uh will be receiving an an equitable. My court is much less than what the district courts receive. But in regards to the actual court setting itself, those three positions obviously were uh important. However, we will be making those modifications in our office to adhere that additional responsibilities will be given to the responsible parties or the responsible employees in my office, to adhere to what I can afford as a department, what our what our county can afford as departments, and how we can go in that route. Um I'm not, you know, I'm not a fan as to how these types of issues kind of get prolonged and move forward in the process. But nonetheless, these are matters that we need to address, and we need to make sure that we are doing what is necessary to get the end goal accomplished as a court here itself. So um aside from from that, on the particular budget, on the and on what has been discussed, I think that there are important measures uh that we need to to take into consideration, of course, and as I mentioned, you know, a lot of this of what is, has been presented to the court uh on on the, you know, hi- highlights of the of the area that we are in question, um you know, it, this is something where it's it's a a reassignment. But it needs to be accomplished in order to get the the end goal uh accomplished for this for this town. Questions in the court in regards to the actual matter?
So again, it is not going to take place until twenty-eight, as we initially thought. It's going to take place. It's already been approved.
The governor has signed off on it according to what Mr. Thomasetti has informed me based on our conversation today. So in regards to the overall budget, are there specific questions that wish to be addressed on this matter? Not?
Because I do recall, every time that we spoke to Representative Morales, it was always mentioned that it was going to happen until twenty twenty-eight.
And that's um the way that the the way that this setup is and the way what's been informed, obviously, to me from from O C A. This has been something based on the call. I mean, we had it today on where we were moving forward. Um it's ninety days from the point of signature of the government.
Do you have any questions?
I I guess I just want to confirm.
So ninety, it's the bill takes effect the ninety-first day after, so it's December fourth or December fourth or fifth. So whoever, that's when the court's created? And so somebody's gonna immediately have to file the deadline and file the run for that office on the eighth, if I'm not mistaken, I was just looking this up because it's a new office that's created. So they'll have to immediately run, file, I think there's a four day window for filing for that vacancy. And that they're gonna have to run, so the Commissioners' Court will appoint that judge to fill that, appoint a judge to fill that vacancy until the election. Or they can leave vacant, depending on which one it is. The court, that judge, whoever runs, won't sit until after November election and then they'll sit for next January. So it's effective ninety first day after the date of private legislative session.
Yes. Yes, Commissioner.
And I remember Representative Morales reaching out to us and speeding up, he wanted us to hurry up and make a decision. And he did mention it was gonna be twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty eight, we didn't think it would happen.
I I didn't. So this was the last thing that I would have wanted, because let me tell you, this budget was challenging enough. To make this more challenging was a bit more of a of a concern for me, but nonetheless. This is how we can make this, um but you know, or to to accomplish what is what we're trying to get done. This is obviously the option that we have at this point, you know, I'll tell you that when we're looking at this particular matter for um issues on. You know, additional funding from within the budget, I mean, we're literally at our our fund um uh deficit based off of where. We were today, we would we would have had at least a healthy hundred thousand left there. If it wasn't for a formula issue that was uh that that caused, one, I think the processing of these books to be so late. Um they depleted about ninety four thousand. So take away ninety four thousand from that hundred and that's what is left right now in fund deficit. Until we start seeing reimbursements from some of these grants that are coming in to get this moving forward. So the challenge here is ultimately making sure that we're running on a really tight budget to get this process, we're functioning, we're moving forward. But um and I'm 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 comfortable with where we're at because I know that, you know, there can be some some adjustments that. At some point, if something is absolutely of enduring need, uh as the Budget Officer, you know, I have. You know, learned to 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 pretty much um love the job. But it's it's challenging because it ultimately affects what is, you know, sometimes some areas of operation in the county. And it's it's just something that, you know, we have to make a decision on and in order to in order to accomplish that. We have to go ahead and proceed with um with the request, um as I have have stated, this is not an issue that targeted. Just the district court system, if anything, it targeted my office, um we specifically saw those. Your water plant lost about a hundred thousand dollars on some of those issues and I apologize that for that, Commissioner. But nonetheless, we're we're, it's a it's a working in process to make sure that we can continue to get additional revenues and we're working towards that. As a court, we're working towards providing options that will continue to provide more revenues for this county. If we had what was a higher revenue source, my end goal as the Commissioner, of course, is requested. Uh Commissioner Reese has requested for there to be a consideration for the study of the um jail or expansion. That there in itself, from what we are moving forward, is ultimately the option for us to get additional revenue. The only way that we can continue growing our departments and our salaries and giving our employees, you know, a minimal at this point. Of some type of a this um uh C O L, a cost of living increase or whatever it may be. Is that we need to gain and bring in additional revenues. It's a challenge, I've come from the city side where we work with millions of dollars, fifty four, fifty five million dollars. This has been a challenge, but we're gonna get through it, we're gonna figure out the best way, it doesn't happen overnight. It doesn't happen in just, you know, one year uh or two years, but we're getting there. From when we started to where we got, from where we're going, while there have been challenges, every year, we have continued to be fiscally responsible. Our audits have been in order, we have been receiving what are excellent audits in regards to these reports. We have grown what is the fund balance in order to make sure that it is above the necessary requirement for. Uh for the necessary days of operations, should the county at some point literally just go bankrupt. We can operate for a certain amount of 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 days or uh months. Those are the types of things that, you know, as a county, we need to make sure that we're continuing to to accomplish. And the only way that we can do that is if we are fiscally responsible and assuring that all of our departments are adhering to. Um the needs, the uh meeting those requests, meeting those concerns and how we can get things done. And it's not, like I said, this is not targeted anywhere. Um the department, more than anything, I mean, like I said, our department got hit. Uh there was there was changes, the water plant was was hit specifically in some areas um for departments that. That obviously for the other ones, I I wanted to try to maintain them as close as possible. There were some cuts in certain areas that we needed to to do in order to maintain the abilities to to move forward. But nonetheless, we were able to accomplish a balanced budget, which is what I wanted to to achieve and to present to the court. For moving this forward.
You know, Judge, uh I've been on this seat for many years. And the and the county, from every county, has always had financial problems and it pointed. August, September, like right now, and I distinctly remember about fifteen years ago. Justice Gómez was in charge, Carlos Pereda was the auditor, we didn't have funds to make payroll. We practically got on our knees and went to the bank to borrow money to pay the employees. And you know, and and you're talking something very important, that what we get. Uh at funding for every county on a yearly basis practically stays the same, however, the needs keeps increasing. Population grows and and maintenance of what we have, the roads and and it. It's just a lot of problems that we continue, financial problems that we continue to have. Uh I think it's getting to the point where we need to get to a system of attrition with our employees. Even any department doesn't have, any department, I mean, it lets uh for whatever reason that an employee. Uh leaves a position, we're not gonna get to hire anymore, that's how bad things are. Yet we're trying to survive and it's difficult. I mean, Golden Bridge Department, we operated practically with skeleton group. And and we continue to do our work and what hurts the most, and I concur, the Commissioner of Pressing Three. Oh, Ramos, I wanted to give salary increase, we approached none.
I wanted to give salary increases to our employees, Commissioner. And we we tried, we tried, but unfortunately, uh it just wasn't within the ability to to get that accomplished. And I and I I won't, uh you know, to reiterate something that you said there, you know, that things are bad, things aren't bad. Things are where we are is is that things are being reassessed and reevaluated. I want to remind the court that the court took action in two thousand twenty one. To adjust what is the minimal pay scale for our employees. Taking that rate to fifteen twenty five per hour, when you, when this county before was at approximately nine. Fifteen, nine twenty five, it somewhere, somewhere around that amount, eleven, somewhere in that in that range. That range has affected ultimately the fund balance, has affected the year to year. Uh decrease in funding because of a because of an issue, and I'm not, I'm not gonna harp on this issue because. You get past the point to where you you can't, you can only blame the past administration for some so much, the point is, what are we doing now? Okay, and it is what it is, the issue is making sure that we can do that because those were actions that were taken at the end of an administration. Doing things that thinking that they were okay, that they were going to make uh them look good. But at the end, only put the county in a financial strain. Reality has to hit at some point amongst all of our departments. And as a Budget Officer, I know it's 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 a tough i- issue to deal with, but I have the the responsibility to inform this court that. Our capability for funding is only at to a certain level, I wish I could give you all more, I wish we had more to give. But at this point, this is what we have to work with. And this is why it's important and and you know, whether it's in projects and it matters. The important thing is how we are financing ourselves in everything. There's an issue of a way of being obviously creative with our financing, creative with our ways of how we are getting projects accomplished in our community. Creative with how we are making sure that working together, we can meet the end goal with these residents that are requesting it. That we can fix roads in colonias that haven't been fixed in well over twenty something years. That we can fix problems because E P I S D cannot go and put their buses through certain areas. That we can accomplish projects that obviously have been trying to get accomplished and that have not been able to get those accomplished until these years, like. The substation, like the issues in regards to making things or uh facilities better for the departments in which. We are all doing that, we all need that, the historical courthouse needs that, for God's sake, Judge Abascal knows. And more than anyone, what the needs are in that particular building, there are needs throughout the entire county, the issue is. How do we assure the financing to get that accomplished and that's why I. My my role here, I take seriously with understanding that while it may not be popular. To present maybe something that I'm presenting on on one of these items, but it is how we can get things done. I ask for the partnership more than anything of all of the departments. We may not get along at times, we may not agree at times, but at the end. One thing that I can tell you is that I have sat and I have always been available to sit down and try to find a common ground on these issues. Um you know, and that's what to me is important here as this as an administrator, as a budget officer, as a judge. For this county is that it's been challenging, but we gotta accomplish it. So you know, what I have presented before you is what we have, what we can do to move forward. Um this comes, of course, like I said, I I would have liked to have seen that, you know, we at least have maybe even possibly stayed. At a rate that was equitable on the on the on the tax rate, but hey, the the decrease was was merited on that matter. Therefore, we have to bring it down because valuations went up, so we do what we have to in order to accomplish that. And while this this budget may have brought in a slightly, a little bit more within this fiscal year. The expenses and the revenues that came in from last year, obviously, were at a decrease that we're not able to fund. The necessary amounts in order to keep the budget sustainable in revenues at that same level. So those are important facts also to take note because we're talking at approximately. Um uh there was approximately a six hundred and fifty eight thousand, three hundred and forty eight dollar uh surplus uh treasure estimate. Um decrease based off of the discussions on those matters. So this is why it's important that I inform you all of all of these actions and where we are to get this to get this done.
Judge, I have a question for Matt.
Yes.
If we were not to fund the county court at law, would it go away, would it disappear, or would we be in trouble with uh?
So that's a good question, and I was about to ask something similar, so on these budget amendments that you're talking about, what all real funding? Salaries for the judge.
So those are set specifically on there for uh for, it's right now, it's set at operating, because obviously, we need to make sure and determine. How we're gonna make that breakdown, but right now I have defined that, left at the operating portion uh for that.
Does it include facilities?
Yes.
Cause yeah, you'll have, you have to provide a facility, so the only other option that you have, because of the way the statute was written and the court's creating, the office is created. And that judge wouldn't take that seat until January first, twenty twenty seven, correct? So if you don't fund it now, that person can still file a run because the office is created, the court is created, but. If you don't fund it, you will have to fund it the next fiscal year, you have to. So if you don't fund it now, you're gonna have to fund it.
Next fiscal year.
Correct, and it will sit vacant until it is funded, that's the only other option you have.
It's a county court of law amended?
It's 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 a statu- it is a statutory, created court, effective December fourth or fifth, I can run a specific date, so. It is a it is a created court.
For all counties and states?
No, just Maverick County, this is specific for Maverick County.
And any other county court, in whatever other counties that we're creating, they'll get their own, but that is the only other.
Court voted to approve that and to request the county court at law.
So if we were not.
I voted against it, what idea?
If we were to fund it, if we were not to fund that, we would have to do it on the next fiscal year.
You definitely have to.
So if we look at the amounts that we're putting on the county court alone, three hundred and forty three, and we add what we're taking away. From the three sixty fifth and the two ninety third, it's exactly three hundred and forty four thousand. Why are we rushing into funding this if we can wait, just like our attorney's saying, and fund it on the next fiscal year? We can also take another step and move this money to two ninety third and three sixty fifth, and it gives us some time to come. The line items are already there, we can come and do budget amendments during the year and put money there, because it's already been created on the budget.
You can you can come back and amend the budget after the fact, and you're still gonna have to find the money, if you don't fund it now, you can always come back and amend it. After October one to fill that. Cuts from somewhere because this is your fiscal year option.
Okay, so we're getting, we're getting a document that we got fifteen, twenty minutes like we do almost every year. Not only this administration, prior administrations as well, it's always that Mister Reese has brought up, Miss Ramos, myself. It doesn't give us enough time to look at it thoroughly, and I'm sure that tonight and tomorrow, we're gonna get calls saying, hey, this, I lost this money in this. And it happens every year, why are we rushing into something right now when we know it's gonna hurt our own employees? That's a big, big concern that sits with me, and I know you have a tough job, Judge, doing this, we all do here. But I don't think we're in the position right now that we need to rush to make this decision when we know we're gonna be hurting our employees. There's other options in the budget that we can look at, but I see an immediate fix right now, and that immediate fix is that. You just told us we don't need to fund that this department right now, why do we rush into it, why don't we put it back? Three sixty fifth, two ninety third. Approve the budget, move forward, and then we have a real tough job for us to come back and say, when are we? When is this person gonna take place, when are we gonna start have to pay this person a salary?
I mean, especially your options, you either wait, fund it now, or you're gonna have to fund it later, you're going to have to fund it.
Um so we're on item twenty two?
Yes, so this is specifically set for the discussion of the actual approval of the budget.
Uh the Judge.
Yes.
It is with a heavy heart for me, but I move that we approve every county budget for fiscal year. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, as presented by the Budget Officer, the County Judge, that is my motion.
There's a motion uh on the floor to approve the budget as it's been presented on this particular matter, is there a second?
Judge.
Uh is there, there's a motion, is there a second?
Die for like a second, you kill mine right away when I don't get a second.
Second, Judge.
Motion has been made uh by uh Commissioner uh Reese, there has been a second by Commissioner uh Ramos, uh discussion on this matter. Being that there is none, I'll call for a vote by voice, Commissioner Reese.
Be a record vote.
Yes, it is a record vote, uh Commissioner Reese, voting in affirmative?
It yes, affirmative.
Very well, uh Commissioner um uh Rios?
Affirmative.
Very well, Commissioner Ramos? Commissioner Morales, against, very well, and I will vote in the affirmative, there'll be a four vote, uh one. Uh for the approval of the budget as it's been presented.
And so there's, it's the property tax, there's more revenue going to be coming in? Okay, so you also have to take this, because you're raising more property tax increase, you also.
Well, we have to take the public hearing of the tax rate.
Well, no, there's under the budget statute, adoption of budget that will require raising more revenue for property taxes than the previous year requires a separate vote. A vote under the sub subsections addition to the vote adopted budget to set the tax rate, so because you you're raising more revenue, you've got to ratify this. The tax increase in the budget, and then you're taking the tax rate vote separate, so you've also gotta do a separate vote on this item too.
On the tax rate?
No, on the budget, because it's raised more property tax revenue than the previous year.
Did we not just do that?
Separate, separate thing, gotta ratify.
Are you asking for a boy, a record vote?
Has to be a record vote as well.
Okay, so at this point from the legal department, uh, we are asking for clarification, and this would be a record vote on the ratified the tax. Increase reflected on the budget. There will be still another action item that will be taken. Are we taking a specifically uh action item number twenty three? Um, Mr. Rose.
It's a record vote to ratify the property tax.
On item number twenty three?
Sir.
That's the item.
Budget.
And the public hearing, just for purpose of clarification, there is a public hearing set for the tax rate.
This is set, this is not tax rate.
It's a set? Okay, so then it is still part of item number twenty two?
Correct.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that there was clarification on that. So clerk, I just wanna make sure that we're clarified. Item number twenty two, under the budget of the fiscal year, there will be a separate item. Uh, within this item uh to assure what is a tax rate ratification of the what has been ratified under the budget. Okay, uh, line item. This is still item number twenty two for purposes of clarification for the clerk. Did we follow? Very well. For the purposes of the clarification on this matter. Uh, for the Maverick County budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six. The tax rate that has been presented uh under the um budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty six. Has a reflected rate of of zero point, uh voter approval rate of zero point three seven eight three one three. Property tax rate of zero point three seven eight three one three. No new re- revenue rate of zero point three six three seven two three. Effective maintenance and operation tax rate of zero point three zero two one three six. Debt rate of zero point zero seven six one seven seven. And the dominus rate of zero point three seven three six five seven. Purposes of this tax rate, we are looking at a reflective decrease of approximately two cents. On this matter for the ratification of the tax rate that is proposed within the twenty twenty six fiscal budget for Maverick County. I'll call for a record vote on this particular item to proceed with moving forward on that consideration. Is there a motion to that effect?
There's a motion.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second? Second has been made by Commissioner Rios. Discussion, clarification. If not, I'll call for a record vote.
Is on the tax rate, correct?
This is just on the clarification for the purpose of.
Do you want me to read the statute? Okay, adoption of a budget. That will require raising more revenue from property taxes than the previous year requires a separate vote of commissioners court to ratify the property tax increase. Increase reflected in the budget. So because y'all just adopted that budget, you're raising more revenue from property taxes. There's increase, although you're not increasing property taxes, there's an increased amount of revenue. So you have to ratify that. That it that you just adopted in budget. This is separate from the actual tax rate adoption, but before the tax rate adoption. So that's what you're.
Record rate. This is just a record vote.
Reflecting budget.
For the clarification, if not, I'll call for the record vote. Commissioner Reese, voting affirmative? Commissioner uh Rios?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Ramos? Commissioner Morales?
Against.
Com- uh, myself, I will vote in the affirmative for the budget that's being presented and the rate. Based on that, we'll now move forward with the public hearing of the tax rate. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Very well. Just wanna make sure that we're following the necessary items here. Item number twenty, public hearing for the consideration of the Maverick County tax rate fiscal year two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six. Sure, my open, are you presenting anything on this particular item? Is there anything specific that needs to be identified other than that? So, uh, the uh for the purposes of the tax rate, I will go ahead and just reiterate uh what I have once uh before. Uh, informed on the public uh for the purposes of the public hearing of the budget and as well. Uh, right now, we will be looking at the county property tax rate amounts per hundred of value on this particular matter. We will be looking at a property tax rate that will be set at zero point three seven eight three one three. That is the voter approval tax rate uh with the debt rate uh that has been set at zero point zero seven six. One seven seven, dominus rate zero point three seven six five eight seven. Effective maintenance and operations tax rate, zero point three zero two one three six. And the no new revenue rate at zero point three six three seven two three. For this purpose and for what we are reporting to the court uh and to the public in regards to this adoption of the budget. We are looking at this matter to go ahead and proceed with the necessary steps of the consideration of the tax rate. Set the amount that I have identified before uh this court. Tax rate will be a there will be a decrease of approximately two cents based upon the valuation of properties. And how that has been set by the uh appraisal district and the amounts that have been set forth. Is there anyone in the public? Um, who wishes to address this court at this time as we will open this public hearing at nine forty four P M. On Wednesday, September twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. Anyone who wishes to address from the public on this item? Being that there is no individual that wishes to address the court on the public hearing of the tax rate, we will then close this public hearing. Uh, specifically uh for this uh item at nine uh forty five. Uh, P M on September twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. Moving forward to the adoption of the tax rate.
Was it the no new revenue or higher note? It does not exceed the no new revenue?
No, it's a voter approval rate. Are we correct? Item number twenty three, discussion and appropriate action to approve the adoption of the twenty twenty five tax rate by resolution and order. Or order for the twenty twenty five uh maintenance and operations rate. And the debt rate for Maverick County and any other matters related to the twenty twenty five tax rate related thereto. Though there may just need to be an amendment of that to reflect twenty twenty six. Is that correct? Or we left you, are we leaving this at twenty twenty five? Is that correct? The the correct verbiage? Is is twenty twenty five. We're adopting into twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. All right. Twenty twenty five is the correct what is posted and what is uh what has been reported on that particular matter. The court has been informed on the matters of the um the action uh that has been presented to the court based on the tax rate. Uh, that has been presented within this budget for the uh proposals that have been set forth uh on this matter. Is there a motion to proceed?
To motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Greece. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Go ahead and proceed uh with uh the items that are pending on the court. Um, look, is there a record vote that's required?
There is also a record vote.
Very well.
Tax rate to adopt the tax.
Very well. We'll call for a record vote on this particular matter. Uh, item number. Uh, this item, we'll call for a record vote. I'll call at this time commissioners, Commissioner uh Reese, voting?
Yes.
Uh, the act signature will be voting on the tax rate, the affirmative. Is that correct? Uh, Commissioner Rios?
Affirmative.
Very well. Commissioner Ramos? Commissioner Morales, affirmative. Very well. Voting, uh, and I will be voting in uh the affirmative for the uh tax rate as it's been presented. Motion uh has been unanimously approved. Moving forward to the item of the.
It's the fees.
I'm sorry?
Twenty six.
Matt?
Discussion and appropriate.
I have, I'm sorry, Mr. Girls, let me not call you Matt, but seriously, Mr. Girls, you you have you have uh. Set a great precedence in how the state code requires the county. To proceed with approval of such, um, and I just wanna commend you for that, okay?
Appreciate being here, Judge.
Thank you, and I apologize that you're here still until almost ten o'clock at night, but this is always what it's about, so thank you so much. Uh, moving forward, thank you for keeping us in check. Um, the next item. We're set here on item number twenty six. In regards to this particular item, I do believe that uh this is gonna be an issue that we're going to need to present to the court. Uh, for the purposes of review uh on this matter, uh, based off of what we had also taken into executive session. And the discussions that were held uh there uh on that matter. Um, I do ask at this time that there be a uh review uh of these fees. Uh, for us to go ahead and consider, and uh we would be looking at this specifically from the sheriffs and constables offices that will be coming forth. These would be a uh recommendations that we would be working jointly with sheriffs, constables, clerks. To address these fees and to possibly come together to bring a recommendation and to get this presented for public notice as soon as possible.
Correct, and we're gonna schedule another hearing.
Correct.
So if y'all wanna schedule a future hearing, let's we'll get with appropriate offices to publish proper notice.
The next meeting that we have set for October, outside of the possibility of the first on this item, we'd be looking at what? October eighth? Is that?
Yeah, we just gotta make sure we get proper notice. It's gotta be, let me pull the statute. Um, I need to, I need to get with them, and I'll get them tomorrow.
Okay.
We need to find out what specific fees we're talking about, what offices, and if it's going to be sheriffs, constables, whoever else. Or JPs, whoever else, because we do have to run notice. It's considering a fee of office, so we've got to do it. Unless it's a statutorily mandated one. Not, we'll still call the public meeting. We can adopt those fees. We can take, we'll amend the budget to to reflect that, so still have time to send it to the comptroller. We're gonna take care of it.
Action.
Not this time.
Okay, so then in as far as uh setting public notice for that purpose, can that be an administrative action that we take? Uh, with the authorization of the court to set those dates to publicize?
Yes.
So I would ask for authorization from the court to grant authorization for me to make that determination based upon when that public hearing needs to be held. Providing public no- notice in the newspaper or if it's required to have us publicize just strictly here at the courthouse. I'd ask for that authorization of the court at this time. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion's been made by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number sixty one, discussion and appropriate action to approve the three two one discount for the Maverick County taxpayers. So move to motion's been made by Commissioner Morales. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner uh Rios, discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Uh, in regards to this particular item, uh commissioner, for the purposes of this, um, I know that we've already seen passed within the the budget on this particular item. Um, the budget at this time uh did not reflect uh the possibility of that. If that is the case, then we would obviously have to make a modification on those numbers. Um, as much as we tried. To keep this in play for that purpose, um, I, you know, think that we will continue working towards assuring that we can reach. The goal of having this discount. I think the court really wanted to approve that, just like we wanted to approve salary uh modifications for our employees. Um, but I do believe that we need to to continue working towards being able to once again provide this, cause that is something that. We are all uh working towards um as as a court on this particular matter, so. I don't know their specifics, you know, I think it's it's it is something that definitely can assist in this process, but. I would ask, of course, for the consideration of the court that we continue to 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 work on this. I mean, there there are solutions that we can work towards, whether it's gonna be issues of, you know, um, matters to to adjust. Um, our budgets, um, and to continue working towards that. Um, it's it's just not as as effective and is as easy as I would have liked to have done it in this particular budget. As I mentioned, just in our fund deficit, we went in that matter of a matter of hours today. From having a hundred thousand dollars that were available uh to having the fund deficit to having nine thousand. Okay, due to a possible error on a on a formula standpoint uh that was done. So this was a bit of a of a challenge, but um. I share the same sentiment, Commissioner, that it is something that we need to work and strive for to bring this back uh to our to our residents. And um my commitment is completely there to make sure that we can accomplish that, you know, hopefully by this next budget cycle that we have to deal with.
I think when we look at the at the budget, Judge, and I know it's a tough one, and I've always brought the three two one. I understand Mr. Reese stands firmly, always against it. But when we put private companies in front of our employees and private companies in front of our residents. It it leaves a sour taste in our mouth. When you say we look at the budget thoroughly, well, we have a contract with a private company. It's just one of them, seven hundred thousand dollars. Easily, we could have looked at that and said. We have the departments in place that do what that company does. We have our parks department at road and bridge that can maintain our parks. But yet this court decides to give seven hundred thousand dollars to a private company. Instead of looking out for our employees that are gonna be terminated because we decided or this court decided. To cut the funding on two ninety third and to cut the funding on three sixty fifth. That's what what we're looking at, and when you have those numbers on the budget that are still there to fund that private company. On top and putting them before our county employees, I don't see how that can sit well with anybody sitting in this court. And when it comes to the discount and you wanna vote against the discount and not pass it because it's too difficult to work the budget. Well, then we're not doing our job by looking very thoroughly at the budget and figuring out, how do we cut first? From a private company and not cut our county employees. So I make my motion as it stands that we approve the three to one discount for our county taxpayers. That's my motion, Judge.
Well, still discussing this, huh?
Is there?
I have a motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
To approve the.
To approve the three to not the to approve the three to one on this particular matter?
That's my motion, Mark.
So on on particular the 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 issue for that, um, and for of course the discount on that matter. Um, is there a second on that item?
Second.
Second, the motion by Commissioner uh Ramos, discussion?
Judge.
We're gonna lose my, there's a second, Judge, call for the vote. There's a second.
Commissioner, there's a second. There is a second, and there is a discussion on this item. Now, what I what I will say on this particular matter. For this issue and how we are, of course, reflecting on this matter for this three to one. The only thing, of course, that I will that I will reflect, of course, to the court on these matters. Is that this this will be a loss of approximately three hundred uh thousand. That was looking that we were looking at the first time that this was done, that very first uh go around. The funding and within the budget itself right now is extremely tight on this on this matter. The budget funding is extremely tight on this particular matter. Unless auditors can provide me with that particular funding that has been identified for us to go ahead. And have that necessary amount that's set there, then please tell me. But based off of the three two one on that issue, when we're looking at needs for insurances. Where we were struggling to find to meet that need today of at least trying to raise it above the one fifty threshold. And that was a challenge in itself. Is there an additional three hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred thousand? That is a round number from what we were looking at based off of that other one?
Judge.
And and those are the concerns that I see right now on those issues. Yes, Commissioner?
We're shooting ourselves in the foot. I mean, we're gonna lose thousands upon thousands of dollars when you this kind of break. It is unconceivable. I mean, I think the commissioner is so gung ho about it. Well, hey, commissioner, put your salary in there. Throw your salary in there.
That's what I put.
And you really wanna help him?
I'll throw my salary, you throw yours.
No, you made the motion.
Commissioners.
I'll hold you to that.
I'll hold you to that. Commissioners regarding this particular issue, commissioners regarding this issue. What I'm gonna do on this particular issue is that I'm going to ask, of course, that we, of course, be level headed headed on these matters. And this is why I think that it's important, when it comes down to these issues, the important thing here is to make sure that we are stewards, of course, of. Of the finances that we're looking at that is here currently right now, and how we will continue to move that forward on that issue. If it's based upon uh funding, of course, that will be removed from this uh budget cycle. We will obviously see uh a matter that could be of uh of concern for this, so. I just want the court to be fully aware of what we're doing and if there are additional uh funding opportunities that are out there. Is that something that is possible, Mrs. Barintos? Because within our budget, from what we saw, and if we're gonna be cutting revenues. By an approximate amount of that such, where would those revenues come from? Cause you're talking about a three two one discount based off of. Cuz you're talking about a three two one discount based off of that specific, I just wanna make sure that that's going to be. And how we are going to be able to reflect those revenues.
Well, our revenues will be decreased, but as far as the budget, I mean, if you're the budget officer. Commissioner's court votes on the budget, so it would be up to your recommendations to cut expenses from the budget to come up with this. I don't have the numbers for the three two one, and I know our taxes are already left, so those numbers were never discussed with our department.
No, it was approximately, it was discussed, the judge had the number right, hit the nail on the head, it was around three hundred thousand.
Well, then the, the option that you would have, because revenues are not gonna increase. Um, I'm tasked with certifying revenues, there's no way revenues will be increased, we already looked and. Reviewed all these numbers, so it would be up to Commissioner's court to make the necessary cuts in your departments to fund this.
We cut our department so we can give this to our taxpayers.
Additional cuts within the.
Yeah, and then, I mean, at the recommendation of your budget officer, but you would.
If the court is willing to make an additional three hundred thousand in cuts of the revenues that are ongoing. My question, my question on this particular matter is, okay, if that's the case, and you all wish to make those cuts in the, the respective departments. By all means, I'll be more than happy to entertain it.
Maybe, uh, okay, I mean, maybe next year we, we can discuss it. But the, the budget's already set, and I'll take the recommendation of the budget officer. Said, said she says, if this is, you're the recommendation, you're the budget officer.
But like I said, if the commissioners wish to cut their budget. An approximate amount that is set forth on this issue, I will be more than happy to take that uh, budget uh, cut. And put that place on the, on the tack, on the, on the actual amounts, from what I see, obviously, on these particular matters. I mean, if, if we wish to reassess it and make sure that we can certify that those fundings will not be um, affected. I will more than likely gladly ask that you all, you know, assess everything and, and move forward. Like I said, um, for it, if we have the funding for it, but if we wanna make additional cuts to the budget. Gonna take additional cuts.
I ask for your recommendation, budget officer.
And my recommendation is what the budget currently has at this point, but of course, if the commissioners, like I said. If there are commissioners who wish to incorporate this into the budget. Then please tell me where it is that you all would like to take it from. Please tell me.
It's a tough one, Judge, because I have a lot of needs at the water plant.
Everybody has needs, we hit the budget today, Judge, we can work it out, and there's a first and second.
Now, the, the war in discussion here on this thing, so.
If we cut our budget, our residents end up losing anyways, because how are we gonna? Do any type of.
Yep.
Repair, improvement.
I mean, I, I, I believe that, you know, on, in this matter, I think that this is an issue that, that is of importance to me. It's important to the court, uh, we've, we've let this, you know, kind of move on in that direction. But I believe that, you know, for this purpose, if that's gonna be the issue, then there's gonna have to be modifications, and we're gonna have to, to readjust. What is the budget with necessary uh, additional cuts there specifically? So if that's the case, is that something that the court is willing to go ahead and do at this time? In order for me to go ahead and make any type of, of change on that issue?
It, Judge, it's just that the other entities, the school district and, and city are laughing at us. You guys have the lowest budget and you're throwing money away, it doesn't make sense, they don't, they don't give any breaks. You pay to tax it, you will pay.
Correct.
That's all.
And I, and I, I, I do, I do, of course, take that into consideration, and, and I, and I understand that, Commissioner. But of course, I also made it clear to the court that if we can find a way to get it accomplished. Please tell me where it is that we can, we can take it, because if there's a, a department, of course, that's willing to. Uh, give up proportion in order for us to go ahead and move forward, then I'll be more than happy to do that. What we can do is that uh, come October one, we can make consideration and we can reassess. If you all give me some options for us to go ahead and consider a possible reallocation. I will reconsider and look at some options in my departments as well, um, to see what it is that we can do. But at least, let's make informed decisions here that are not going to detrimentally affect the budget. That's my only concern, so if that's the case, then I would ask the court for the court to be conscious of what it is that we're doing. In order to move forward in that issue.
And if you be voted today.
This doesn't have to be approved today, I mean, obviously, this is an issue that we need to get taken care of, but we can definitely visit on this. Uh, commissioners, like I said, if you all wanna sit down with me.
We approve it today, or, or we don't, because how are taxpayers gonna, now we're gonna have to, that's why I brought it forty five.
Correct.
Days ago, so that we would have enough time and put it on the tax bills, and it kept getting delayed, 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 delayed to today, so let's make a decision. Let's make a decision so that we at least have some time to tell our taxpayers, you know what?
I.
We did get a discount.
I have no, I have no issue bringing it to the court and even calling what is a considered special meeting just for this, Commissioner. To work with all of you all on this matter before October one. Okay, so that our tax department, because believe me, in comparison to other years, when our tax department was literally not given the necessary documentation and information. Until hours before what is the sending out of the necessary billing of the cycle of this process, as was reported to me in this, in this. Um, go around, I think that we owe it to them to at least be able to say, okay. Here's where we can more or less make some modifications from, or cuts from. Let's, let's show the taxpayer that obviously that this court can work together to make that accomplishment on this particular issue. So if that's the case, I would be more than happy to sit down with you all, call a special meeting for what is set for, we could possibly look at this for the. If we have right now, we would be looking at posting tomorrow for the, for the thirtieth, so that would give them sufficient time in the morning. To post tomorrow morning on this item, on the thirtieth, they would have to report for their tax invoicing. And then we would have insufficient time on this issue, but it would be in the morning, we would call a special meeting, that is what I would recommend to the court. If you want the recommendation of this budget officer.
I need to look at numbers, so that, that's my motion, Judge, so that we can bring.
There's a motion and a second, do you rescind your second?
Oh, there's already a.
Well, you seconded the Commissioner's motion, so you'll rescind your motion uh, on this, on this issue. Commissioner, would you rescind your motion to, to deal with this on that matter at that time?
No, so I stand with my motion.
Is there a motion then, is there a second for that motion then, for that particular issue? Then the motion dies, and what I would reflect is that we schedule a special meeting on uh, the thirtieth of September. Um, for us to go ahead and proceed with this in the morning. Uh, and to discuss it and to see if we can kinda come up with, with the conclusion to this, to this item and go ahead and go from there. But the issue here is that I'm gonna ask for every member of this court to consider what is the necessary cuts from their specific and respective budgets. So that we can go ahead and look and see if we can reach these, these goals, or at least look at this matter. I'd call for this meeting to be held at eleven AM on uh, the thirtieth of September, okay? We will post this agenda tomorrow at eleven AM, so that'll be uh, the issue that we can, we can proceed from there.
So at that time, we, we would be doing budget amendments so that we would be, if needed, right?
Amendment for.
To do the expenditures, cuz your budget already been approved, you're saying that we don't approve the three two one, we're gonna have to cut. We, we need to get money from somewhere.
I, I need to make, I need to, obviously, we would obviously need to look at this issue, make a consideration on that particular matter and see if that's issue, is there any issue with that, legal?
Your other option is set three two one, it's for tax bills mailed after September thirty, I'm, I'm gonna have to look, cuz there's, there's possibly another option. Give me a second, please. I apologize.
We, we don't have the actual number, do we?
No, the only number that was presented at the time that Miss uh, um, Casas was at Tax Selector, that was the last time that we had a, a tax. Uh, three two one discount, it was roughly at around a three hundred thousand mark.
Is the tax system not here?
No.
And it's not a discount, it's a loss of money.
I would, you can call the meeting for October, I would call it, not September thirty, you can call it. We can call for the other meeting, the tax bills can still be mailed after the discount is adopted. As, as long as they're mailed after September thirty, so.
But I mean, for that point, but at that point, if there is a consideration, if there is a consideration, that ultimately is offered when they're coming in. Right?
Judge.
To, to provide that.
If they pay their taxes in October, November, December, they'll get the discounts, right, so.
They come in, they qualify for the three percent. Okay, so we'll post for that meeting uh, on that matter uh, for this issue, and then that way we can go ahead and proceed from there. And while, and while, um, of course, uh, on that, on that particular issue, on, on what it is that we are moving forward. As always, I stand here uh, as the, as, as the budget officer. With professionalism to make sure that this court is informed upon the decisions that they make. Uh, I won't stand for whatever political tactics that are obviously being uh, stated, stating about issues and contracts that are issued. Contracts of which, Commissioner, you yourself voted and that approved what is unanimously before this court. So in regards to matters that we're dealing with, let me make it clear that for whatever these issues that we are facing, we continue facing on this issue. The court will go ahead and call for a motion on this issue, just to go ahead and set that meeting uh, set for the eleventh, eleven AM on Friday. The, no, is it?
Let's do it, it's Wednesday.
Wednesday?
You'll have to, we'll get, we'll get it ready and posted. It can stay, as long as the tax bills are mailed after September thirty, so we can do it next Wednesday. Let's aim for them.
Okay. Alright, we'll go ahead and then set then for that, uh, set, set that timeframe for Wednesday. Uh, at eleven AM, but we can still post and get that going already, okay? Alright, uh, with that uh, matter on that particular action, is there?
Wednesday, does that work for everybody?
That's fine.
Commissioners?
No, I'm not going out of town.
Well, we know.
Four, million three.
Don't worry about it.
I'm sorry, on this issue?
Million three people, right?
That's, that's all that's needed specifically on this issue. So for this particular matter, um, what I will do is we'll go ahead and then set that meeting for that timeframe, and we can go ahead and proceed with moving forward at that uh, at that date. If there is no other item uh, that needs on that issue, we'll go ahead and proceed with moving forward on. Uh, the other pending items that are coming before the court, um, for. Item number sixty two. Commissioner, do you still wish to take that item even though it's already been approved in the budget?
Sixty two was withdrawn.
That's recalled.
Um. I only put it because the auditor's office asked me to, to place it.
Well, it's already been approved.
Yeah, it's already in the.
Okay, withdraw, Judge.
Very well, item number sixty three, budget amendments uh, for the fifth school year twenty twenty five. Uh, budget amendments have been provided for your review, are there any modifications, changes uh, that need to be done?
Any modifications?
Not, is there a motion to approve the budget amendments?
That's a motion.
Motion has been made by Commissioner.
Sorry.
Uh, Reese, second by Commissioner. Uh, Ramos, discussion, yes?
I, I guess I wanted to check and see, was there something, or was it an accounts payable that we need to, something about a PO for precinct two?
Oh, that's an accounts pay.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Okay, uh, if there's nothing further on this particular matter, uh, budget amendments have been provided for your review, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous, item number. Six to six. Discussion on appropriate action to ratify the time-sensitive payments released by county treasurer and auditor, is there anything specific, Ms. Barrientos?
No, there, I don't have any right.
Very well, accounts payable, is there a motion to approve accounts payable?
The move, Judge.
That doesn't reflect the items from precinct two?
Um, no, I, do you have your PO for that one?
Um, as for Rudy, he said that, I mean, I've got it here, I.
Yes, you could, as long as you um, give us the amount and the vendor, I believe it's, it's for a travel purchase order. That can be added, and I also have another um, invoice to add to accounts payable. It's uh, Boss is the vendor, and it's invoice number two, three, six, four, thirty four. PO number two fifty two one sixty five, this is out of Road and Bridge. Fund one twelve in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred thirty seven dollars and a cent. This is for the machinery that was purchased for Road and Bridge. If it can be added to accounts pay.
Ms. Barrientos, it's PO number two five two three one one. For the amount of six hundred thirty twenty cents.
Okay, and it's out of fund one hundred.
It is out of fund one hundred, yes, ma'am.
And this is for travel?
For travel.
And the vendor?
Um. Kilton Galveston. Island Resort.
Did we have anything on?
Okay, um, if the court so.
The election.
Wishes to approve it, I have all the information needed.
Was there anything specific, I'm sorry, if that's the addition, that's not a problem, is the PO for the elections equipment, did we need anything specific after that? As long as we have the execution, the, the concern is can we execute payment on that? Yes? No, I mean, as long as we have the contract, they just needed the contract sent to them, so that's all we need. Okay, very well. Uh, then on that, and just can you make sure that we get that to the, them with the signed contract, and that's in my portfolio? I left it on my desk, if you can bring it, just so that I can make sure and sign it and give it to them right now, uh, there's no further changes on the accounts payable? Is there a motion? Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner uh, Rios. Discussion?
Uh, one more thing, Ms. Gloria, there's a reference PO number on the bottom, and it says this new PO will replace the old one listed. Do you, that's the same thing, okay?
Very well, if there is no further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous, warrant spending. Items have been presented for your review, is there a motion, motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous. Have we covered all items, Madam Clerk? You sure? You wanna check again? Alright, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Oh, yes.
Unanimous, thank you all very much.